I'd like to call it over, select board meeting to order on Tuesday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. Uh, there's somebody coming up the stairs, so I'm gonna wait a moment till the head. Yeah. Here we go. Evening. Evening. Uh, okay, first order of business is public comments. I see nothing. Moving on, unfinished business. Consider participation in Wyndham Solid Waste Management District's request for bids. And I hear Dan, you have, you and Travis have spoken about this.
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, I don't think we have anything to lose to, um, participate in this because we're not signing any document that we're changing. It's just to put out an RFP to see if there's any other help. Peter, formerly from Triple T, has been leading the charge. He only was there like thirty years as general manager. So if he could find a solution, I think it'd be great. So I don't think we have anything to lose. Obviously, somebody might say, well, they'll jack our prices up. You know, maybe they'll drop our prices. Well, we don't know what they're going to do. But in the free market world, we have the opportunity in the right to look for other possible things. We do bids here for everything we do, so.
So, and we do not have to accept the bid.
Correct, correct.
Okay, any questions about this? Yes, you know. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh, I made a motion that the town of Dover participate in the Wyndham Solid Waste Management District's request for bids.
Second.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
And Jeanette and Travis will work on putting this together. Is there anything we can, we don't, there's no signature or anything on here. So, there you go.
Okay, make sure.
Make us. Okay. Next item, new business, consider maintenance agreement for the Snow Lake Dam project. This is a, a maintenance agreement, a public-private partnership, um, from the town of Dover to. I'm trying to get to the, the meat of this. Routine to maintain routine maintenance on the property structures or facilities acquired or constructed as a result of a federal grant. Routine maintenance shall include, but not limited to such responsibilities as keeping vacant land clear of debris, garbage, and vermin, keeping stream channels, culverts, and storm drains clear of obstructions and debris, and keeping detention ponds free of debris, trees, and woody growth. Uh, it's the, and Mount Snow has received the same, exactly the same contract for maintenance as to make sure the town knows its responsibility and maintains its responsibilities. There is no date this ends, this is, would this be recorded with the, in, in the town records? I mean, how many people in the future know about this?
Sure, I mean, I can record it in the town book.
Um, I'm also a little bit concerned that there's no specific mention of requirement to maintain areas that are on, on town land or in the town right-of-way. That it reads as though anything that came out of that grant, regardless of the land it sits on, would be our responsibility. And it also says that to Mount Snow, so it doesn't really break down who's responsible for what, the both responsible for everything.
Yeah.
But it doesn't talk about within the town, within, on town land, within the right-of-way, anything like that. It's just, you're gonna do all this stuff.
And the road is, I was right.
It's a right-of-way.
Right.
So it's a needed right-of-way. Um, and we don't own the land, we have a right-of-way over it, and we have maintained it as a road uh, across the lake. But now it's gonna be either a large, large culverts or, you know, that kind of structure. Then it's making it sound like we own that structure as well, potentially. So I, I think I'm with Sarah, I'd like more clarification.
Yeah.
And Melissa isn't here with us tonight.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, and if you're making a pond into a river, what part of it are we responsible for? You know, we don't know where they're gonna build, what access they need.
Patrick?
Yep, um, I, I agree with the statement that we need to learn a little more. My question, reading this, and maybe there is an answer, I don't know who we're agreeing with. There's nobody, I'm not sure of the, what this get, does this get attached to something else, or are we just making a declaration? I wasn't sure about that.
I think it gets attached to future grant requests.
Okay, so it's a certification that goes with the grant request?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I understand that. Okay, good, that makes, that makes more sense, but I, then I agree with, I, I'm not clear, it looks like if, if the town gets federal money, whatever they spend the money on, we're obligated to maintain and repair. That seems like, I think Dan, somebody said it, it feels like such an open-ended commitment without a real sense of what we're committing to maintain.
Dan, oh, wait, Jim, sorry.
I have two questions. Is this a forever document?
Yeah, that's what I don't know. I mean, it sounds like it is, so. There's no end date on it, there's no anything.
And.
Or beginning.
Over, yeah.
And number two, has Travis seen this and looked at it?
Yes.
And where's the personnel coming from to do this? I don't figure this is, uh, and, oh, by the way, can you handle this thing? I see this as a nightmare.
Jeanette? Well, yes, Travis has seen it, he does not have an issue with it. Um, I think this is what we would normally be maintaining anyways. So, I don't, and I wish I had some of these questions before, because I know Alyssa is on vacation this week. So, I, you know, I can't answer the, those questions, but I know she was hoping to get this back so that she could submit it with the grant application. Um, Mount Snow has, has submitted their maintenance agreement, which is pretty much worth a word, the same as this.
Jim?
Certainly, if, if you look at Snow Lake now, the north end of Snow Lake accumulates a lot of ground, silk, debris, that all comes from upstream. I know in, not in this document, but other stuff that were presented. Uh, owners from Snowtree right up into upper, upperhand of the road are responsible for keeping silk, debris, whatever. So this affects more than just the town.
I, I would like to see it within the town right-of-way, added to this document, at the very least.
On town lands and within the town, and/or within the town right-of-way.
And I, I don't know if it, I mean, obviously, handle road will be impacted by this dam removal as well, so. It's, it's hard to have this document without a whole lot of context about what it really means, and, you know. I, I don't know, it makes it sound like we're responsible for those culverts as well now, if they're, you know.
Well, it, it doesn't say we're not.
I know.
And it doesn't say we're, it, and I'm, I mean, maybe this isn't really an issue, but I don't see who we're agreeing to this with. Like, we're just agreeing?
That we have a maintenance responsibility.
So anyone can interpret what it says here, however, to include anything, if, if we got a federal grant, and because the last one, we had to apply for it, because they, it could only be a municipality who applied for it. So if any money out of something like that were spent, we would then be on the hook for anything that came out of that grant.
Hold on, Jim's first.
I wouldn't miss this, but who drafted that document?
Within regional. And they're trying to get another grant, and that's how they fund themselves.
But they're, they don't even have a.
I know. But I think it's just, it's, it's part of this grant program that you have to do this. But I think that it's fair to have some question, ask, ask her some questions. Yes, yeah.
Uh, we're making a pond into a rhythm. And traditionally, you can't go anywhere near the rivers to touch them without state approval. So is it a state river now, or is it, we have to maintain the, obviously, the road alongside of it, but we don't even know where this is.
Yes.
Did she give you a deadline by which she needed this for the grant?
Yeah, actually, it was, it was the ninth, so I convinced her to wait until today, because your meeting was today.
Um, if she's on vacation, is there someone else in the office who could address this? Who could answer the questions we're having?
I can find out. I can read you what she, what she emailed along with this. Um, she said, for the H M G P application for Snow Lake, this was to Kevin Harrington at Mount Snow. I will need a signed copy of the attached maintenance agreement. As Mount Snow owns the majority of the land that the Snow Lake project lies on, you do need to agree to maintain the project after it is constructed. The town will be sent their own version of the same document to sign for their maintenance responsibilities for the culverts and right-of-ways.
But it doesn't say, seem like this is a unique document within the town, it sounds like it's the same document that's, that's Mount Snow received. So I, I think that we, I don't really want to sign this tonight, I think that.
I would like there to be an amendment to it that would just specify what it says in the email, because the email's not part of this document.
Yeah, I, I think, I think there's probably, you know, the, the words that I, that I keep looking at here are uh, real properties in the middle, it looks like the fourth line at the end. Real property structures and facilities acquired or constructed as a result of such federal aid. If we, it was acquired by the town or constructed for the town as a result of the federal aid, then it's anything we own, we're responsible for maintaining, right? That could be simple enough, or alternatively, if there's a scope document that says this is gonna be what the town of Dover's is, that we could attach to this, then maybe that would be easy too.
Okay. I guess we will see this again.
Okay, could you maybe compile a list of, of questions or concerns?
Sure.
If people want, email them to me, I'll put it down, just so I have everything that you need.
Okay, yes. All right, uh, moving on, economic development, review and approved business incentive programs.
Hi, Eric. Hi. Okay, so, after reading through the notes, uh, that were provided for the comment period, um, we decided not to add the changes, uh, would you like me to go through why?
Uh.
Just so that it's clear about.
Sure, and for everybody else, you might.
Uh, we'll start with the, the comments from Jim, utilize a square date box for docs received on the right side, et cetera, et cetera. Um, Shannon uses a spreadsheet to track all of this information, so we felt that that was redundant. Um, B I N, the employee identification number, so registration with the Secretary of State is not a requirement of having a business. Um, and we do not believe that all the businesses have this. You know, we if, if, that's, any questions on that piece? Um, attach proof of payment, payment to contractor, paid with stated receipts, et cetera. Uh, final invoices are required for payment already, even if payment is made with cash, there is an invoice. We are not of the mind that we can't pay out money for invoice paid cash caches, I mean, it's still
Legal tender.
It's legal tender, right, so we can't dictate how they pay their, their invoices. Um, so we feel that that's not something that we have control over. Um, have you received do-it grant in the past? This is already on the application. Um, a signature line with the printed name underneath, an application prepared by X, these are already stated on the application. Um, we're, that would just be making them required to sign them again. Um, the empty punch list, again, we use the spreadsheet to track all of that information. Uh, the hard deadlines, there is a hard deadline for do-it and D-TAP. If an application is missing one piece, they have until the day I need to send to the board to include, but there are no exceptions. So typically, if it, um, you know, if it's something they didn't realize they needed or something, and Shannon reaches out to them, I mean, we there's a pretty quick turnaround, it's, um, where we get those documents. Uh, the last question in regard to, uh, extensions of projects that were approved. Uh, extensions have been granted when the vendor availability prevents the work from completion of on time. We have not added this information to the application because we do not feel that there's a need to let people know it can be extended. Our goal for projects is to be completed in the timeframe, uh, for immediate impact upon the town, so. We, we do make those extensions when it's necessary, because a vendor can't make it, but we just don't advertise that, because we really like to see those projects. Um, comments from Sarah should be. Uh, I don't know. You had made a comment about adding a, a piece about, you know, asking for money before the payment is made and, and making those arrangements. Uh, we feel that adding this opens the door to an overly complicated application, and more people trying to use the program this way. Um, after photos, that's already a part of these, um, when it makes sense. Signage. You had made a comment about, um, applications can't be made within three years of the last grant unless there was a change in ownership, location, we should include, or if existing signage is destroyed, et cetera, et cetera. We said, we do not think we need to add this. We cannot account for every possible instance, we've always brought those up on a case-by-case basis, and that's, I mean, they all come in front of you anyway, and it's information that we provide to you when it, when it happens. Let's see. You had brought up, uh, the drone and the, the point-of-sale, uh, items that Jim had mentioned in the meeting. Uh, before and after photos are required for each submission, but in some D-TAP cases, it's not practical. Uh, we use the, the instance of the Grey Ghost with their drone, we, we see a photo of no drone, and then a photo of a drone, and, and just didn't feel that made a ton of sense. Um, again, we will never write a program that encompasses, uh, we, i- if, if it had been asked, uh, we could have confirmed that the point-of-sale system had been installed, uh, as, as a republic. Again, we will never write a program that encompasses every situation and future commentary, and I do not think we need to punish our business owners by trying to create that. Uh, and then the only other one was, um, Janine Conti had confused, uh, I think signage with, uh, D-TAP, or with, um, do-it rather. So that's, that's that. Um, so those were our thoughts, if, I, I sent you guys all of the notes we were given for the programs. I included this lovely note, uh, which I would like to make public for Richard Regina Werner, uh, thanking Shannon for everything we do and for executing our incentive programs for the businesses. Um, so if you guys have thoughts on, you know, pieces of this you'd like to see, by all means, we, we're open to that, but the, this was our thoughts on what was submitted on.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
Um, so there are a lot of applicants that you never see. Um, I deal with a lot of, um, incomplete applications, applications after the deadline, um, applications that don't meet the program requirements. Um, you will never see all of that, because that's my job. Um, so there's a lot of that that happens each season. Um, just last do-it, I know you remember, um, the pickleball club sending their application two days after, and the work was already completed. Um, so there's a lot that goes into these programs that you'll never see, and that's, I would hope by design, I don't think you want to see all of that back and forth. Um, but we know, we look at these programs every year, we try to add things. I feel like DASB, we've really fine-tuned over the years, um, but we're never gonna have an application that foresees every possible instance that's gonna come our way. So I feel like we're at a really good spot right now where they cover most things, and then the ones that are oddballs, we do ask on a case-by-case basis. Um, but I don't think we need to change what everyone is filling out, um, for those situations.
Other comments? Jim?
I think the board should delay approving this tonight until the original document gets put out again, along with the suggestions. And the reason why economic development, testing things, they should be considered. And some initial public comment again.
Sarah? We gave people thirty days to comment. He went through every one of his explanations for why he didn't believe that the recommended or the suggested changes should be made, and personally, I think that everyone there was explained well and made sense, and I don't see a need to, um, to draw this out any longer. I'd like to see us just go ahead and look forward.
Can I add something?
Yes, Shannon?
Um, if you choose to delay them, um, it will push do-it into a completely different time window. Um, it has generally always been May first, applications open. Um, usually by now, I've already sent it out to businesses. Um, so if you decide to delay them, um, I will have to rewrite the program. Um, and those businesses will have to wait for a different timeframe.
And a lot of that work is done in the summertime?
Yes.
Any other comments? Jim?
Recently, there's been two message complaints filed with the state along with a court argument against town, I believe. I think just railroading the current guidelines down the tax base throat, which is unconscionable.
Are, are you done, or, no? And, and I'm not, I'm not trying to cut you off, and Sarah put her hand up, so.
Okay. I, I fail to see how this is railroading. This has been out for thirty days. He is, we, we put it out and requested public comment, we got comments from four people. But four people, one of which was a thank you note. People, the information, I mean, I'm not sure what more we should be doing to get more commentary. There was, and the ethics complaints are separate and distinct from these programs. That's a different issue, it gets registered with the state, but the state does not investigate, and the state does not comment. They simply forward it to the person, the liaison here in town, which is our treasurer. And then in, investigations are done. But to imply that, that these programs need to be different because those things were, complaints were made and will be handled, the way they're supposed to be handled, I don't see the connection to this and why these have to be held up more. I'm not sure how many more people we're gonna hear from if they didn't get in touch with us for thirty days when they've had the opportunity. What, what more are we looking for? If we're looking for the people who made comments to have a chance to reargue their case, two out of the three are here tonight, and can reargue their case right now if they so choose.
Other comments? Jim?
So what, what I'm taking from the board is the board feels that the existing uh, draft proposals are rock solid. And there's no way to avoid fraud or abuse. Am I correct in that?
Eric?
First of all, I'd like to say, I am not speaking for the board. So if you have an issue with my comments, you can direct them directly to me and not claim it's from the whole board, because I am one person, and I don't speak to the board. Second of all, no, there is no, in my, to my awareness, there is no way to write a program that is one hundred percent fraud-proof. I believe that Shannon and Eric do a very good job of, of looking at these things. I believe that they are very thorough and conscientious, and as Shannon said, there were plenty of applications we never hear about or see, because they either don't fit the criteria, they come in late, or they're incomplete. But to think that we're gonna somehow write these documents in a way that they are one hundred percent bulletproof, I think is, we're going to end up creating programs that no one can use. The, the hoops that will have to be jumped will be too large, too small to get through. They'll be too complicated, and we'll, we'll end up killing the things that we're trying to accomplish.
Anybody else? All right, somebody want to make a motion to approve, which ones do we need to approve tonight?
Every, it's everything, everything but D-TAP, Shannon?
Yes. Yes, do it in the signage program.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve the, um, the site, the Dover commercial signage improvement program application, the Dover advertising support program application, and the Dover opportunity for investment in the town do-it program application.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
A tactical small two.
All right, third order review.
Okay, so the town received two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents in one percent tax revenue on February fifth to the period of November second through February fourth. Uh, the same payment last year was one hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-eighty-nine, so we had a twenty-one percent increase of this year. Any questions on that? Great, um, marketing, we presented the Bytown marketing update and approved the fiscal year twenty-five funding. Uh, we approved the Ramon Academy Mouse, uh, at Mount Snow signage program application, the sign is up, it looks great. Uh, approved the event funding program, or program funding for the Blueberry Festival, the Independence Day fireworks, and Wine and Harvest Festival through the chamber. Uh, we approved the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-seven flower barrel program contract. Uh, we approved five K event funding and approved the year-round pole banners. Um, on Prales, we reached the parking, the Horse Hill parking agreement with Mr. Kaplan. Uh, we installed a quarter potty for the snowmobilers, we were, uh, using W and B in the B and station. And we submitted a, uh, land and water conservation fund recreation grant application for, uh, money for the skate park, which there's a drawing up here, if anyone's interested in seeing. Um, as far as housing, we're, uh, finished up the final stages of testing on the S C R registration system. Um, we did have our very first registrant the other day.
Yay.
Who made it through, uh, with no issues, so, uh, very happy about that. And then under other, uh, responded to numerous public records requests, which have taken up, uh, a large amount of time.
Can, can you estimate the amount in terms that's been depleted from the, the economic development department on those requests?
Um, most of this has been going on for the better part of four months, uh, so we, we've spent a very good amount of time. Um, actuals, uh, compared to our budget are attached to the document.
Okay.
Any questions there?
Questions of error?
Nope.
Okay. Next, we have quarter potties at Fabian Station.
So Mr. Werner had reached out to me, um, wondering if I could put in front of you all uh, just to put the idea out there of keeping a quarter potty at the Fabian Station year-round. Um, he sent a picture, which I forwarded to you all of where it would be located, and, uh, his email describing what he would do for beautification in order to, um, to, so we didn't just have a quarter potty sitting on the side of Route one hundred. Um, his reasoning behind the request of the board is that um, with the bathroom situation still being tenuous at seven eleven, um, you know, a lot of people, they, seven eleven was actually sending people to Fabian, uh, to use the quarter potty, it wasn't just snowmobilers. Um, that being said, we, you know, the, the pickleball courts have reached out to us and asked us to, you know, place bathrooms there again, I would recommend doing that again, because it was, uh, you know, it wasn't just utilized by the pickleball courts, you know, and the Blueberry Festival, people walked in on the trail, there was definitely, you would see people leaving the trail to use the restrooms. Uh, and then again, um, probably another back in the park, because that went extremely well, and was very well received by the users of the park, especially during concerts and things like that, so. Um, ultimately, if we decided to, uh, provide, uh, that third one, we would have one in the park, one at Fabian, and the two at.
Seems a bit redundant.
It does.
I, I, I'm happy that the one, the one in the park, um, worked out well, because I was concerned. That there could be some, you know, vandalism or damage, and it worked out, and I saw people using it, and it, it was hidden from the road. Um, so seven eleven could tell who would go over to the park. Uh, I know that there was, I guess, some feeling of reluctance about walking across the pickleballs, um. You know.
Into their space.
Into their space, even though it did say restrooms, um, but I think people just, if they need to use them, they, they'll walk over there and use them.
Yeah, actually, sorry.
Or they'll walk a quarter mile farther going. Yes.
Actually, on Horse Hill, attached to the kiosks, we said, you know, restrooms are located.
Yep.
Twenty, twenty miles south, twenty miles north, so like, we're, we're showing people that those are the public restrooms for. That at one point, Mr. Kaplan had brought up putting one somewhere in his parking lot, but again, I feel that may be a bit redundant, because we do have them in the park and.
Sarah?
When do the, when does the one for the park get? That's not your route, right?
No, it is not, uh, we will. Um, right now, we're just kind of waiting for things to dry out a little bit, uh, but the lovely snowstorm this past weekend didn't help with that too, too much. So we just want to make sure that the ground is pretty solid before they back the truck across to.
Uh, yeah, and also the pickleball, when is, when is Trip proposing?
We had a brief discussion about it, um, when it was still snowing quite a lot, um, so we'll have another discussion soon, that should be in front of you guys, and I'll.
I see they're doing work on the pencil right there, so.
They are, so, um, as soon as I have that conversation with Trip about when he wants them there and until when, I will get the numbers.
Okay, I think.
I would just say, I think we're, we're well covered.
Okay.
I'm not sure that prominent year round facility at Fabian is necessary.
Okay.
I would definitely be in favor of doing it again in the winter. For the snowmobilers, I think it is convenient for them there, because we don't want them driving on the valley trail to get to a restroom. So, I mean, there's a definite positive there, but. I, I, I think it's overkill.
Anything to say, Patrick, about that?
No, I agree with Sarah, I think, I think it's nice to have it there seasonally, but I'm not, you know, I think we have enough. This, at least in the warm months.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep, good, thanks, Eric.
All right, needs to go to the Board of Liquor Control. All in favor?
Aye.
Jeanette, um, likes that he read that to Jeanette, told her the rule was that, do, do you have all the documents and check sheet the person was there?
Uh, no.
Okay, they're all.
Pending, pending receiving.
They're right, pending, well, I shouldn't say that, I have the sawmills. Um, but everyone else, we've been on.
Can you do this all on one motion?
Either.
Uh, they're all, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, so I should read it all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot to read.
So I make a motion that we approve the following licenses. First class license for sawmill bar and table, Valley View Saloon and Hermitage Gin. Second class license for Hermitage Gin. Third class license for sawmill bar and table, Valley View Saloon and Hermitage Gin. Outside consum- consumption permits for sawmill bar and table and Valley View Saloon. Tobacco license for Hermitage Gin. And request cater for blonde and hoozy for a wedding at the town hall on June fourteenth, subject to receipt of all necessary documents and payments by Jeanette.
Second.
Well done.
Any discussion at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to come out of Board of Liquor Control.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda, we have to approve the minutes of April first.
I'm looking for them right now.
Yes, Joe was present via Zoom.
Okay, I make a motion, approve the minutes of April first, twenty twenty-five.
Any changes or revisions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, well done, Jeanette.
I make a motion that we approve the warrants of April twelfth, twenty twenty-five for two hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred twenty-four dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
All in favor, and Patrick, you have, did you look at it? Okay.
He, um, yes, okay.
I, I, I looked at the summary and then asked a few questions, and Jeanette provided me the information on the one, the questions, ones I had questions about, so thank you.
So where are we, did we get sent?
We did, yeah, we got a second, we did, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have F Y I's, River Valley Union Unified, Unified School District Annual Meeting. On, pre annual meeting on April twenty-first at the Dover School, not at Town Hall. Dover Water Task Force meets April twenty-third at five P M. Conservation Commission meets April twenty-third at seven P M. Here, right, they need here, Conservation Commission.
Um, no, typically, they need at the town hall, but I believe this one is going to be here.
Uh, D R B hearing here, April twenty-fourth at seven P M. The River Valley's U- Union School District Annual Election on April twenty-eighth from ten to seven at both Dover and Mordsboro Town Halls. And the River Valley Union School District Annual Meeting, April twenty-ninth in Mordsboro at seven P M.
At the Mordsboro Town.
Yes, it's a Mordsboro Town. Liaison reports? Executive session? All right, so everybody emails Sarah with, uh, questions about the, uh, maintenance agreement. And pieces that we might want in there, and then Sarah will compile that and give it to Jeanette.
I can deal with it tonight, so I can get it turned around.
I can't, tonight.
Do it right now.
I will, I will, I'll put it together and send it to you, you can say yes or no. Then you don't.
No, I, okay. All right, so quickly, if you can, so that we can get it, get it turned around. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Seven oh seven.
What we heard, we didn't, we don't, we don't say our deliberation.